The June 3 meeting of the Issaquah City Council is called to order at 7:00 PM. And the council and I invite those who are present to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag if you wish.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and that we are a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
The next item on the agenda this evening is an item of special business, and that is a presentation on water protection. And I believe Keith Niven is here to speak to that topic.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. I'm pitch hitting for Dan Irvin this evening since he's on vacation with his wife, which sounds like a great thing to be doing today. So I'm going to do my best, so please feel free to ask me any questions as we go along. So tonight, what I'd like to do is to talk to you a little bit about the Lower Reed Infiltration Gallery. And really, it's in response to a letter that was sent out by the Semamish Plateau Water and Sewer District. And there are a number of things in this letter that I don't think are true, but I really want to spend time talking about three things this evening with respect of time. So the first thing is that the letter claims that the water going into the Lower Reed Infiltration Gallery is untreated stormwater. That's the first thing I want to talk about. The second thing I want to talk about is it talks about injecting stormwater. And there's a nuance there that's worth talking about, and I want to talk about that. And then the third thing that the letter talks about is that this type of an infiltration system is untested. I want to talk about that. So you'll hang with me here. The first thing I want to do is show you an excerpt out of the Issaquah Highlands Development Agreement. And what this comes from is comes from the stormwater section. And what it is, is it talks about restricting building materials. And why is that important? It's important because there's all sorts of chemicals that leach off of certain building materials, and specifically copper and galvanized have things that are not good for stormwater. And I'm going to go ahead, and for those of you who don't know me, I'm not an engineer, I'm not a scientist, I'm a city planner, so some of my terminology might be a little broad, but hang with me. So the first thing is, is this is, the development agreement for Issaquah Highlands was a contract between the city and Port Blakely communities for the development of that project. And so these restrictions were part of that contract, and every building permit that went through city review was reviewed to make sure that these materials were not part of any construction. The second piece is, is there is a commitment made that the homeowners in Issaquah Highlands would also follow through with basically the intent of reducing pollutants that could reach the public stormwater system. And so there is a homeowner's manual that comes with discussion about moss control. There is a section that talks about how to take care of your yard by limiting herbicides and pesticides. And these were all part of the overall framework. And part of the reason why that's important is if you can basically take out a lot of the pollutants from stormwater before it ever gets into the public stormwater system, then the amount of cleaning that you have to do later is much reduced. So the next piece is, the stormwater all then flows into the Upper Reed Pond. Before it goes down to the Lower Reed Infiltration Gallery, it goes to the Upper Reed Pond. And the Upper Reed Pond, and I couldn't, you know, I walked all the way around it today, and I couldn't really get a good vantage point to show you how big this pond is. But this pond is designed for the, I think it's the 100,000-year storm event. It's really huge. And the point of that is that this pond can hold a lot of water. And as the water is held in this detention pond, a lot of the particulates fall out as they settle into the bottom of the pond before the water is then transmitted down the pipe to the Lower Reed Infiltration Gallery. We also, after talking this through, decided that it was important to put some chemical sensing valves in the pond. So what these are, the one on the right is a valve that's along the intake system, and the one that's on the left is on the outtake system. And what this does is if there was ever a chemical spill or a gas spill up in the Highlands that would actually reach the pond, what these sensors do is they close the valves. So what happens then is the water doesn't go down the hill into the infiltration gallery. So these things are something that the city paid for and added, I think, three years ago. Once the water goes down the hill, there's a 500-foot-long bioswale. And the reason why the bioswale is important is it reduces silt, inorganic compounds, and organic chemicals. So as the water kind of flows through the vegetation, the vegetation kind of grabs some of the things that are in the stormwater before it actually goes into the ground. So this is another form of treatment that is part of the overall system. The second piece I want to talk about is, you know, the way the letter reads is, it is implied that the water's actually being pumped into the ground, and that's not exactly the way this works. Issaquah Highlands is up here at this elevation, so this is where that pond is that I showed you. There's then a pipe that goes down the hill. The bioswale sits on top of this little bench here, and then the infiltration gallery is below that. Now, we've talked a lot about the infiltration gallery. This is what it is. So basically, what it is, is it's two six-foot diameter manholes, and those are on both ends, that are vertical. And what they do is the water goes, so the water comes down in the very middle, and it then splits into the bioswale. Half of it goes one direction, half of it goes the other. It then goes, falls into these vertical manholes where it then fills up a 36-inch pipe. And then, once that pipe gets full, the water rises through these T's till it gets to a 12-inch perforated pipe. And that's like, basically like a French drain that a lot of you have in your yards. And what, the reason why we designed it this way is because what it allows for then is a much more uniform distribution of the water as it comes out of this pipe. And it seemed like for us that was an important design criteria for when this was built. The last piece I want to talk about is that this has been tested for a long time. And, you know, the stormwater has been infiltrated in this location for nearly 50 years. It was originally an infiltration pond for Bob Reed and his quarry before Port Blakely bought it and turned it into the Lower Reed Infiltration Gallery. When Port Blakely owned it, they infiltrated stormwater in as high of a quantity as 12 CFS, or cubic feet per second. The city is proposing to only infiltrate two CFS as a peak infiltration rate, so one-sixth the quantity that has been infiltrated there in the past. In 2004, the city and the Highlands developer, Port Blakely, convened professionals, geologists and hydrogeologists, from eight different firms to evaluate the infiltration system for Issaquah Highlands. And this was following the Camp Creek Hillside Slide, and we had to basically figure out what to do with stormwater. The city hired Shannon and Wilson to provide a peer review of the recommendations that came from that analysis. So we felt like we needed to hire someone else even to look at the results of that. Monitoring of the L rig began in 2002 by Port Blakely. The city installed a new monitoring well at the request of the Department of Ecology in 2009. And then, we have been monitoring stormwater at the L rig since 2008. So that's, that's just some information that I thought needed to be shared this evening. Are there any questions?
Keith, can you go back a couple of slides? When you showed the lower reed, yes?
That one?
Yes. What's that bypass pipe?
So, the bypass pipe was installed so that if we ever get a, so the water quality is monitored in advance of putting it into the L rig and then downstream. The idea is to understand how the water is kind of mingling with the water that's already in the ground. And so what this is, is it's the ability for us, basically, if we, if we pick up a reading here that is troubling, what we can do is basically shut off these, and the water then flows into the bypass and into basically the North Fork of Issaquah Creek. So what this allows us to do is to basically stop the infiltration of stormwater through the L rig and send it to the North Fork of Issaquah Creek if we ever should encounter a problem.
Councilmember Butler?
You said that water has been infiltrated in this area for the past 50 years. It's my understanding that there is a well that is, what is the distance between the Lower Reed Infiltration Gallery and the closest well used to provide water, drinking water?
So, well, I can answer that in a couple of different ways. As you can see from this map, the L rig sits on a bench right here, and the closest well, production well, is well number nine, which is owned by the Semamish Plateau Water and Sewer District. That's a 600-foot horizontal difference. This well is 200 feet down, so to figure out the exact dimension, you'd have to do some triangular math. And I think I said I'm a planner. So, but that well has not produced water. The district has chosen not to turn that wellhead on for the past few years. They have three wells on the valley floor, and they can choose to operate them in any configuration they want.
Okay. And if I could, Madam Mayor, the LIV, the Lower Issaquah Valley Aquifer, which is represented in blue there, that provides water for City of Issaquah residents and for Semamish Plateau Water and Sewer District customers also?
Yes, in part. Both the city and the Semamish Plateau Water and Sewer District are members of Cascade Water Alliance. And so part of our water comes from the wells that pump out of the LIV Aquifer, and part is regional water from the Cascade Water Alliance.
And that Vado zone there, could, could you describe its function in relationship to stormwater?
Yes. I almost brought in the cartridge filter that I have for my kitchen water system because it works the same way. So what it is basically is it's the sand and gravels that the water flows through to basically clean it before it gets to the Aquifer. So it's a filter, basically.
Right. Thank you.
Other questions from the council? All right.
Jen, I'm sorry.
Oh, certainly. Councilmember Winters, thank you.
Thank you. So Keith, I think the three points you were replying to from the letter, could you just, they were about claiming that there was no treatment? So, this is not just semantics. It is, the system is, the pond is treatment.
Yes. So the heavy part-
And the bioswale is treatment, right?
Yes.
I just want to make that, so this is not just semantics. I mean, those are-
And the source controls are also considered treatment.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. And then, the last point that, I think you had it up there, is not tested.
Yes.
Was that, was it a reference that the, that this particular system wasn't tested? Or that the, in the letter, or is it that, that this type of solution in general is not tested and proven?
I was really more answering that this particular configuration has been well-tested.
Right.
The other one is also something that could be discussed if the council so wants.
Yeah, I think we've heard a little bit about it before. I just don't have the letter, so I wasn't, couldn't recall exactly what the intent was, and challenging whether or not it was tested or not. Because I've seen a lot of information, and information provided by the Department of Ecology about many examples of this type of infiltration system existing in and around here. So I thought when you said not tested, you were going to also make some comments about that this isn't brand-new technology either.
I think that point might be made a little bit later.
Okay.
I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
I have some points that I'm going to make, so that, some of this is additional information for the council, and it is information for the public who are viewing this on Channel 21, and also those who are present this evening. The Semamish Plateau Water and Sewer District recently sent out a letter that mistated facts about water quality and attempted to use scare tactics to further the agency's own political agenda. Most of the letter was simply not true. There are three very separate topics that the district is melding together for its self-preservation campaign. And this has caused a lot of fear and raised questions among community members. The council has seen emails expressing concern, and understandably, if I were to receive a letter of the sort that was sent out, I would be worried about what was happening with my drinking water. Tonight, I'd like to address all three of these topics. The first one is water quality. You just heard more from Keith and Niven about how the L rig works. Issaquah, which has provided water to thousands of customers for decades, would never harm its own water source. Nor would the Washington State Department of Ecology, the independent agency charged with protecting all water in the state, allow that to happen. The practice of infiltration is far from new. Ecology has 430 stormwater injection systems registered in King County. These include an elementary school in Semamish. Plus, as you heard earlier from Mr. Niven, the area of Issaquah has been used for infiltrating water since 1964. In partnership with Ecology, we've been monitoring and testing this site for years, and will continue to do so. Safety is our top priority. The second thing I'm going to talk about is Kohani. So what is the motivation? People have said, what, what would this motivation be? Self-preservation. Tom Harmon, president of the district's board, was extremely active in campaigning against Kohani and its neighboring communities annexing to Issaquah back in 2005. On the eve of Issaquah releasing its most recent Kohani potential annexation area study, district officials launched their current misinformation campaign. History is repeating itself. Mr. Harmon recently informed the city he will do whatever he can to prevent the potential annexation to Issaquah. And recent letters to the editor of the Issaquah Press make those views very clear. He is now using his position as the district's board president, as well as $50,000 of ratepayers' money to further this political agenda. Another point. No matter your take on annexation, I want to make these facts clear. If the Kohani potential annexation is annexed to Issaquah, the Kohani potential annexation area's water would still be provided by the Semamish Plateau Water and Sewer District. Now, the state does encourage cities to provide utility services for everyone within its boundaries. That is a rather customary normal, if you want to call it that, function of municipalities. Someday, the City of Issaquah would study the impacts of providing that service to Kohani, to the Kohani PAA instead, at a potentially lower cost. But before any decision is made, there would be significant public process. Now, I'm going to speak about the utility study. This is the third item that is not related, but is being put together with things. As I mentioned, the state encourages cities to provide utility services for everyone within their boundaries. And that is why the City of Issaquah is currently conducting a separate utility study that involves portions of the district in northeast Issaquah, as well as some City of Bellevue customers in South Cove. While Bellevue has been extremely helpful during this process, this study has caused plenty of concern among district officials. It's disappointing that the district is attempting to use fear for political reasons. But I want to assure everyone who is here that water quality is our top priority. Meanwhile, the city is conducting both the Kohani PAA study and utility study to understand options for potentially enhancing service in our community. Public input during both of these processes will be very important to us. For more information, you may find it on our website at issaquahwa.gov. The next item on the agenda this evening is entitled Audience Comments. It is an opportunity for members of the public to address the city council on items of interest or concern to them. These items may be on the agenda for the evening, or they may not. The guidelines for public participation are that when you are recognized, we ask that you use the lectern and the microphone so that you may be seen and heard, both by people in the council chambers and by those who are viewing this council meeting on Channel 21. We ask you state your name, your address, and if you wish to emphasize a relationship to the city that you feel is important for us to know, that you are a resident, a business owner, whatever, whatever the item of importance to you is, please feel free to do so at that time. We further ask that you limit your comments to five minutes or fewer, and that you submit written comments to the city clerk. And with that, I will ask if there are people who have signed up to speak during audience comments. So first, Nick Garson? Garson?
Garson. Okay. Thank you for letting me participate tonight. My name is Nick Garson. I live in Semamish. I have no political agenda tonight. I'm a licensed geologist, and I've worked in the environmental remediation field for over 20 years, so I have some experience with the gentleman's presentation earlier. And I have a few questions for the city council as a follow-up to the pending Department of Ecology permit application for this process. So one of my main questions is, I understand there currently is stormwater treatment in progress. The question is, is it effective? I reviewed the water quality data, water districts, and typical chemicals that are sampled by water districts are different than those would be, that would be sampled, say, on an industrial cleanup site. They typically, water districts focus on fecal coliform, bacteria, and certain types of metals. But for people who work in the remediation field who are familiar with stormwater runoff, stormwater contaminants can contain chemicals such as gasoline that contain carcinogenic compounds, benzene, others. I can throw acronyms at you all night. There's a host of chemicals that are contained in stormwater that aren't typically sampled as part of a water district management. So that pertains to my question, is this stormwater treatment effective for handling the type of contaminants one might find in runoff from a heavily-used area such as the Issaquah Highlands and other portions of Issaquah? The Department of Ecology has an anti-degradation policy that mainly prevents the injection of known contaminants into groundwater. My recommendation is that a minimum of the Department of Ecology should look for as many contaminants as are practical to prevent degradation of our drinking water aquifer. In my experience, it's atypical for a production well to be located as close as shown here to an infiltration gallery. Another question I would like answered, I haven't found any information from the Department of Ecology that indicates whether or not a tracer study was done to determine whether or not a chemical could get from the injection gallery into the production well. I understand the production well is not in use, but it could be used. And so we need to protect this, this water for future, future use, future generations. It's not clear to me what the radius of pumping influence would be from the infiltration gallery to the well, and if contaminants could migrate down when the well is being used at full capacity. I thought it was interesting, I heard something, a water quality monitor brought up in the infiltration gallery. I'm not familiar with that type of equipment. I might want to learn some more. But I don't quite understand if, let's say there was a tractor-trailer hauling gasoline up in the Highlands, and it spilled, and that gasoline got into the stormwater. I don't understand how the water quality meter would be able to detect the concentration of that particular chemical or other chemicals and shut the system off. That's pretty much it. I don't know if there's anyone who can answer those questions, but I wanted to raise these issues that, I guess in summary, I'm not sure that the types of chemicals that are typically found in stormwater runoff are the same chemicals that are being, that are being sampled in both the Semamish and Issaquah Water Districts' wells. And I've looked at the treatment systems for the water districts, and they don't seem to be effective for those types of chemicals. They're really geared towards chlorinating water to prevent ingestion of bacteria, fecal coliform. And they seem to be set up for filtering of metals, but they don't appear to be able to handle the types of contaminants that are typical in an urban area in stormwater runoff. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other people who've signed up to speak? Yes. Rob Young.
Thank you, city council, honorable mayor, city clerk, city administrator, and city attorney. I'm Rob Young. I'm a resident of Kohani, and I just came to update the council and all the members of the Kohani PAA annexation process. About five weeks ago, we, a lot of us got to go door-to-door and person-to-person and delivered over 3,400 information flyers that a lot of you have seen. And we delivered them as many person-to-person as we can. You know, that's not always 100% possible. But the feedback we got was about 95% positive, meaning that the highest percentage of all the population that we could touch, including all the people we know and don't know, was very interested in becoming the City of Issaquah. They wanted to go through the process. They were hoping that the process would be simple. At some point, they didn't want to be swayed by other things that seemed to get us off track. And so to give, to give my feedback and from our group is, we'd sure like to have the city council with the subcommittees' reports on the annexation from the study, you know, move forward with the annexation process. We'd, we'd love to be part of the City of Issaquah. We'd love to be coming down the hill where we all go every day, pretty much anyway. And that's the update I wanted to give you. Thank you.
Thank you. Other people who've signed up to speak during audience comments?
Yeah. Dick, and I'm sorry, on the last name, if you could pronounce it for me?
Well, I couldn't pronounce it well until I was about 16. My name is Dick LaRue. I live at 4652 238th Way Southeast in Issaquah, Washington. And I repeat, Issaquah, Washington. Madam Mayor, City Council, thank you very much for the opportunity to address you. I had intended orig- I had intended originally that my only subject was going to be support for annexation, but the intervening events, 20 May letter that the mayor has so adequately addressed earlier came to me. I read that letter, and I thought to myself, there's something rotten in Denmark here. So I took out my yellow highlighter, and I made a bunch of copies of the letter, and I was going to highlight those, one for each member of the council, and I was going to highlight the either incendiary or inflammatory or parts of the letter that were intended to create, I thought, undue concern. Well, it became very obviously, very obvious to me, I was going to run out of the yellow highlighter pretty quickly. So I am just so proud of this council, this mayor, who responded to one of our residents, who responded the way the letter was supposed to result, and very much was concerned and excited. And the mayor's answer was very much, by email, to him, like you heard tonight. It was cogent, it was data-filled, and it made the very best of sense. Kudos, Madam Mayor. Thank you so much. Now, to the other subject that I had originally wanted to address the council on, annexation. Rob said, oh, he had about a 95% positive show, and I'm going to take the "about" out of it. In Brookshire Estates, we decided that we were going to get a vote, an actual vote count of our folks. We have 138 homes, I know that's not that big, but we had a response of 61 people, and that's 41% of the total population, if you will, of Brookshire Estates, came back to us. And 58 of those responses were, yes, we really want to be part of the City of Issaquah, three negative. Now, if you do the math on that, that is precisely 95%, not about 95%. And I can show you the data if you'd like to see it, and I've got the list, name by name, residence by resident. This is not entirely unlike what we saw in 2005. And I asked the council, please, 2005's vote, I think, was challenged in its accuracy by some shenanigans that took place, count them, two days before the election was held. I think that was inappropriate. The city had taken the high road. They had presented wonderful information, if you want to see it, you can go back. I think I have one of the last remaining copies of this document that Mayor Frisenger, you put out to us, so people could look at data and not be swayed by emotion and make their decisions. They did. They overwhelmingly voted to become part of the City of Issaquah.
Forty-five seconds.
Thank you. And the unfortunate part, as we all know, was there was a second part of the vote, and that part of the vote failed, and that was to accept the bonded indebtedness. I believe that was actually a bogus part of the presentation, the vote that was being asked for. People wanted to be part of Issaquah, we still want to be part of Issaquah, and thank you, Madam Mayor, and the council, for everything you have done to make Issaquah a wonderful place to live and that you continue to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other people who've signed up to speak?
Well, the last on my list is Scott, I think it's Hamilton.
Good evening, Scott Hamilton. I live at 19727 Southeast 19th Street in Samamish, and I was a Samamish Planning Commissioner for around five and a half years. So I'm familiar with comprehensive plans, I'm familiar with water quality issues, perhaps more than many people. As I listened to Mr. Nevin's presentation, I was struck by a number of things, and this is in no particular order. The agreement about homeowners up in Issaquah Highlands supposedly taking care of things like moss and pesticides, you know, we dealt with that issue in Samamish, and our planning commission concluded that that is, you know, a great idea, but it's completely unenforceable. There's just no way that you can be assured that homeowners are going to do what the lofty goal is. And while this is indeed a lofty goal to have the homeowners do everything just right, it's, to be perfectly frank, impractical. So I really kind of discount that as a solution out of the Issaquah Highlands stormwater runoff. Member Butler, you had asked how much of the aquifer serves other residents outside of Issaquah? The answer is 50% of the water for the Samamish Water and Sewer District comes from that aquifer. There was a comment that the well has been shut down for a number of years. Well, it was shut down because fecal coliform infiltrated into that aquifer and contaminated it. Now, Mr. Irvin last week went to the City of Samamish, and he also did the same presentation here at the City of Issaquah, and he talked about total coliform. He did not talk about the infiltration of fecal coliform, which Tom Holtz here last meeting told you will go through any sand filter. There is an expert up in Samamish that I hope to be able to get to you by the name of Greg Allen. He deals in sand filters. He will tell you that fecal coliform cannot be stopped by this type of a sand filter. But that well was shut down because of fecal coliform infiltration, and last, your last meeting, your Mr. Irvin did not talk about fecal coliform. One of the things that especially concerns me is this whole political agenda thing of self-preservation. Well, I do not live in Clahani, I live in Samamish. I got that same letter, Mayor. And Tom Harmon, who I've known since before Samamish was created as a city, Tom and I were part of the citizens' activist groups that filed land use appeals against King County, and I won every one of my appeals, by the way. I've known Tom for years. I have a lot of disagreements with Tom, but Tom is only one voice on that commissioner, commission of five members. The assertion that this is all about self-preservation and all about preventing Clahani annexation. Now, you may believe, and you may have some solid grounds to believe, that Tom Harmon doesn't want that annexation, but that doesn't necessarily mean that's the motivation of the entire commission, and I think you're overstating that fact, Mayor. You also said in one of your emails in response to these people who have emailed you, "Ecology is drafting a permit for Issaquah to slowly soak pretreated stormwater into the ground. The stormwater falls in rain and doesn't include any industrial waste." Well, you talk about misinformation and untruths, that's misinformation and that is untrue, ma'am. We're not talking about just rainstorms here, we're talking about runoff from Issaquah Highlands that contains metals, we're talking about fecal coliform that comes from bird poop. So let's not get, you know, really holier-than-thou here about this, about misinformation. Now, what really concerns me more than anything else is that Issaquah...
Forty-five seconds.
I'm sorry?
Forty-five seconds.
Thank you. Is that Issaquah and the Water District are not even talking to each other. I would really like to see this city council and those commissioners actually get into one room and have a conversation where we and the whole public can come and hear both sides. Right now, we have the Water District saying one thing, we have you saying something else. There's no dialogue, it's a monologue. I'd really like to ask you guys to engage in a dialogue that the public can come and hear. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who has signed up to speak? Anyone else present this evening who has not had an opportunity to sign up who wishes to speak?
Hi there, my name is Corey Colwell Lipson, and I am a resident of Samamish. I'm a business owner in the City of Issaquah and a former Issaquah resident, and I just want to thank you so much for opening this up for public commentary and so that we can come and hear and learn more. Politics are not what I'm here to talk about. I think that it's incredibly just disappointing to hear about the politics going into something as important as our water. I just see this as being an important topic for neighbors. We've got to figure this out. And as a mother of two young children, and as someone who works in the environmental world, and I'm also a licensed family therapist that focuses on the transition to parenthood, I'm a member of the Collaborative on Health and the Environment for the State of Washington, and I would like us all to consider looking at our children, holding our grandbabies, our nieces and nephews, and to ask what's more important than our water. So I don't know, I'm not a geologist, I'm not a scientist, I don't know the answers to all these questions, but when I look at the possibility of pumping these contaminants, which include all of the things that have been mentioned here tonight and above, near the water that we'll be drinking and bathing in, which, by the way, our bodies absorb 60%, up to 60% of what we put on our bodies, so bathing our babies, taking showers, all of these things that we do to be clean and healthy, if we have these fecal contaminants, if we have roundup, if we have, you know, other things, other contaminants that are in this runoff coming into our water, I'm alarmed as a citizen. So whether it takes place within this group of people here or within a roundtable of other members of our community, I just really ask you to try to put politics aside and to just look at water as being essential to our very well-being and to our future generations. We know that what our children ingest and inhale and take in will stay with them for a lifetime, and this is a beautiful, beautiful city and a beautiful place to live, and I think that the beauty and the health should stick with our children and not contaminants from something that is perhaps politically driven or financially, you know, decided because of finances. I think that it's possible that we can't afford the best situation. I mean, we have limits to what we can spend to get rid of these contaminants, and we all live in a community where we have runoff, we drive cars, we, you know, take care of our lawns and things like that. So it may be that it's an issue of what can we afford to do, but I would just ask that, you know, don't worry about what other cities are doing. I mean, you know, we tell our kids, just because Johnny's doing it doesn't mean we should do it. Just because other cities do it doesn't mean that we should. Let's look at what is best for our citizens and our neighbors and move forward with the best intentions to have the cleanest and healthiest water. So, thank you, and I don't have any other questions except for just to leave you with the question of, if money were not an object, and politics aside, is this the decision that you would still go with? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who has not had an opportunity to sign up who wishes to speak? Anyone else who wishes to speak? Third call. Anyone else who wishes to speak? Seeing and hearing no one else who wishes to speak, audience comments are closed at this time. Next this evening, we are going to have committee and regional reports, and I think before we do that, however, I will note that there are two council members absent, Eileen Barber and Tola Martz, and both of those council members are excused. And with that, I will ask council member Forkner if he had to report.
Thank you. The Infrastructure Committee will be meeting on Thursday, June 13th, at 5:30 in the Pickering Room at City Hall Northwest. On the agenda so far is discussion of the current transportation improvement plan, and also, if the consent agenda is approved tonight, the Agenda Bill 6655, franchise agreement, McLeod USA Telecommunications Services. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Council member Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Land and Shore meets June 11th at 5:00 PM here in council chambers. On the agenda is Agenda Bill 6656, having to do with amendments to the Construction Administrative Code. Also, if the consent agenda passes tonight, Agenda Bill 6667 relating to transfer of development rights and amendments to that, proposed amendments to the code will be on the agenda as well, and I believe that's all that's officially on the agenda right now.
Thank you. Council member Scher.
No report, thank you.
Council member Winterstein.
No report about council committees, but the next meeting of the Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee is next Wednesday at 7:00 PM in Renton City Hall, and I'll be attending as in lieu of council member Martz.
Thank you. Council member Butler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The next council work session is scheduled for June the 10th. That will be the first of two work sessions, one in June and one in July, to review our existing financial policies and then talk about any policy changes to our existing policies that we would like to consider. Our July work session will be around our capital funding outlook for the next five or 10 years. Council member Goodman and I attended Cascade Water Alliance Board Retreat this past Saturday. It was great discussion and informative. I know I learned a lot from it. We reviewed the history of the Cascade Water Alliance and then began to look at potential capital expenditures, wage, rate, potential rate increases, and then looked at how CWA links their strategic plan, their budget, and their work plan together as they develop their biureum budget each, every year. So that was a good model that we might want to consider at some time in the future. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Mayor's Report. There will be an executive session this evening to discuss active and potential litigation. That's under RCW 5.60.060, bracketed 2 and bracketed lowercase a. And these items are expected to take a total of 30 minutes, and I will ask if action is anticipated. No. All right. I'm pleased to announce that to date, the Issaquah City staff and Eastside Fire and Rescue have raised $5,230 for the Relay for Life event. So far, the Issaquah Relay for Life event has raised a total of $153,389. And the final numbers will be released sometime around July 1st. The money raised at this event, which is happening this weekend on June 7th and 8th at the Issaquah High School, remains in our community to support those battling cancer and support research being done to fight cancer. The start of this season's Issaquah Art Walk begins this Friday, and this free event is presented by the Downtown Issaquah Association. It's celebrated starting at 6:00 PM the first Friday of the month from June through September. And during the event, regional artists set up temporary shows in the Historic Business District and along streets for the evening, and visitors can watch artists in action, participate in creative activities, and listen to live music. The final item on the mayor's report is that I am happy to announce that the City of Issaquah is now the proud owner of the, this is rather a long name, and I don't believe it's going to be the final one, Julia Love Pritt Foundation Darren Pritt Property, located on the corner of Juniper Street Northwest and 5th Avenue Northwest. And this two-acre property will help connect Creekside Properties as part of our Issaquah Creek Waterways Program, and it further protects and preserves our aquatic and riparian corridor resources. This is property that is perhaps a pendant or a little bit of an This is property that is perhaps a pendant or a little bit of an ancillary gem to the green necklace concept that we have in our central Issaquah land. So it's awfully close to being part of the necklace, I guess is what I'm trying to say. With that, I know that there has been a request before I ask you about the warrants and before you move into the consent calendar, there has been a request that Item E, Agenda Bill 6654, the federal grant for East Lake Samamish Parkway, be brought down and placed under regular business. And so it will be the second item, become Item B of regular business. And with that, I will ask the council if accounts and payables and payroll have been reviewed.
They have.
Okay. And then I will ask what you wish to do with the consent calendar as amended. Councilmember Butler?
I would move approval of the consent calendar as amended.
Second?
Moved by Butler, seconded by Winterstein. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We are now on the first item of regular business, which is Agenda Bill 662. And that is a bid award for water main replacement. And I'm looking to see where that is. Do we -- yes. I was gonna say, do we have someone present from Public Works Engineering to run us through this information? Thanks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. Todd Christensen, Public Works Engineering. I'm here to present Agenda Bill 6662, the bid award for the 2013 Water Main Replacement Project, W-00813. Briefly go background, history of where we're at. Under the proposed contract, we were designed, we were looking at doing a base bid work of approximately 1,800 linear feet of main replacement, which included 1,300 linear feet of storm drain from the reservoir, highwood reservoir. Also included some work around mountain index and also the Creekside apartments. At the time, we were looking at putting the plans together. We also separated a section out to have added to alternate bid, which was for the work around Gilman Boulevard between SR900 and 12th Avenue. On May 22nd of this year, we opened bids with a base bid coming in, with a low bidder on the base bid coming in at around $520,000. The additive alternate for the low bidder was $160,000. Reviewing those bid amounts and the budget that we have, we recommended not to award the additive alternate just due to the pricing. We originally were hoping that through the bidding process that we'd have good bids and the option to include that additive would be a benefit. But with the bids way they came in, we're not seeing that happening. So with the bid price coming in at 520, in the budget of 600,000, we also have against the budget of including preliminary engineering of 104, just a little over 104,000. That puts us over our budget amount. We looked at ways of reducing the base bid. There was a couple scenarios that we saw. One was to remove the mountain index portion of work, which was about 140 linear feet of main replacement. With that, we did see a reduction, but we were still seeing that it would be over our budget amount of approximately -- by approximately $30,000. We also looked at removing the portion around Creekside apartment separately. With that removal, we were seeing that the total project was a reduction of about 30%. And then there was multiple items that were totally removed and then also several items that were reduced by over 25%. When we remove items or delete portions of work that affected a unit by 25%, we have to renegotiate with the contractor on bid pricing. With that, we run a risk of increased costs in different areas, which potentially would then raise the base work of what's remaining by amount. We don't know how much that would be through the negotiation. The other option we would have is to reject all the bids and go out to re-scope the project and go out for rebids again. With that, we see potential problems with maybe not enough bidders. We only had four bidders in the first round. So we don't know if we'd have qualified bidders come back in. Also, we don't know what the price would come in for that reduced scope of work. And potentially, they generally come in higher than what we'd have here in a larger piece of project. So with that, we're requesting that two things. One is to adjust the budget, amount budget, to $677,750. That would be coming from the Water Capital Ending Fund balance, which would still have a balance left over of roughly $2 million. The other item that we're asking for on this is to award the contract with that revised budget. And with that, I open up to questions or anything I can try to answer.
Councilmember Fortner?
To get things started, I'll move to award the 2013 Water Main Replacement Project Contract to Sanders General Construction for the base bid amount of $520,314.44, tax included and contingencies for the amount of $52,635.56 for a total project amount of $677,750.
Moved by Fortner and seconded by Winterstein. Questions from the council? Councilmember Winterstein?
So this is going to be more of an accounting question. So the Agenda Bill talks about leaving a balance of a little over $2 million in the ending fund for the Water Capital Fund. I see that the budget, if I'm reading this correctly, forecasts $3.6 million ending fund balance. Okay, and so this would be this difference in this Agenda Bill, that $77,000, is to come from that fund. So there's still over $1 million in the change of that ending fund balance. Is that something that we can get an explanation for?
I believe what you're referring to is the payment from Cascade Water that I did not include in this $2 million. So I think that answers your question.
I don't know anything about the -- well, could you remind me, please, about the payment for Cascade Water?
That was a one-time, I believe, payment from Cascade?
Came in at the end of 2012.
Okay. It came in within 2012 from Cascade Water Alliance to the city for capital. And it's a one-time payment, which goes towards into the Water Capital Fund, which at the time this was presented, I did not have that number to include. So that, the ending fund balance is actually more than what I'm showing here.
Councilmember Butler has asked that Sheldon Lynn, perhaps, described this because this was something that Cascade Water Association gave us. And it was?
Sheldon Lynn, the Director of the Public Works Engineering Department, Madam Mayor and council. The Cascade Water Alliance paid the city roughly $3 million plus or minus at the end of 2012 for its credits that it had for regional connection charges. And so while I don't have the budget in front of me, it may have not have reflected it completely yet. So I'm not sure what the million-dollar difference is at this point in that. I'd have to look at the budget book.
Any other questions or discussion? Councilmember Scher?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, this really isn't my area of expertise. And we've talked a lot tonight about water-related issues, so I'm trying my best to catch up and stay on top of these things. So my question is probably going to be very basic level of understanding, but the project that we're talking about here, what is the expected lifespan of this infrastructure? And my second question is, is it the typical sort of infrastructure when it comes to water mains? In other words, by doing the not additive bid, but just the base bid, it's not like we're getting some kind of water main that's, you know, substandard or something like that. And I'm probably presupposing the answer, but just from my own information.
Sure. The replacement rehab project is replacing old mains or undersized mains. Typical lifespan is of ductile iron pipe is, I think, 75-plus years. We're replacing AC asphalt concrete mains, and we're also replacing some old galvanized mains. As they age, they become prone to leaks, breakage, different things like that, also capacity issues. That's where most of the stuff we're replacing either upsizing to make current standards. For example, the stuff in Creekside that's served by a couple six-inch mains that have a couple fire hydrants off them, we're replacing that with 12-inch and 8-inch mains. The mountain index is of 2-inch galvanized. That's serving three homes, and we're replacing that with a 4-inch ductile iron main. So life expectancy in all that is, like I said, probably 75 years for ductile iron.
Yes. Councilmember Butler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Typically, every year, we replace a certain amount of our aging water mains. And so we should have a pretty good record on, you know, what it costs over time. And so I know that there's inflation, you know, that might impact that. And then the amount of work out there, if you've just got a few folks who are bidding on it, then the price typically tends to be a little bit higher. So what do you attribute to the fact that the engineer's estimate was in the $475,000 to $600,000 range? And this came in at $677,000, which is pretty significantly above what the engineer's estimate was when you consider, you know, we typically look at a range. So, Todd, what happened?
Sure. The area of work, most of the area of work is dealing with the highwood reservoir and replacing the feeder line there and the drainage for the tank overflow. The access to that site is very limited. I mean, it's an access road. It's steep. It's going up gravel road. Just access to it is more difficult than if we're doing it in the valley floor where we have open streets and that. That's what we're seeing is just because of the site constraints, something that we feel is what's causing the price increase here.
Okay, that makes sense. So after you opened bids and you were doing your due diligence, has Sanders done work for the city before?
Yes, they have.
And have we been happy with the work that they have done?
They've been fairly good contractors. There's sometimes when just some of the paperwork, we have to keep pestering them about. But they seem to be a very good conscious contractor. They did the work out at southeast 43rd and East Lake Sam, the roundabout out there.
Okay.
That's a big project that they had handled.
Okay. And after you opened bids and you were doing your due diligence, did you have any discussion with any of the other bidders about why the bids came in so high? Were there other things other than difficult access, constrained site, those kinds of things?
We did not poll the bidders themselves of reasons behind the pricing. But I expect it was being that we had so few, just maybe the market out there is being more competitive and they're finding work.
Okay, great. Thanks, Todd.
Other questions? Yes. Councilmember Winterstein?
Thank you. I need to clarify a question I asked earlier. And my apologies to my colleagues and members of the staff. I was actually reading the budget wrong. And so I followed the wrong line across. I did find Sheldon. I found the payment we got. That's reflected in the 2012 -- 2012 ending fund balance. It's there. The actual budget for 2013 ending fund balance was about, was forecast to be 2.1 million. You take away this additional expenditure, and it's very close to what's listed as the new ending fund balance in the Agenda Bill. I'm sorry for creating that confusion, but I'm satisfied with the information I was seeking. Thank you.
Other questions or discussion on this topic? Is the council ready then to act on this motion to award the 2013 Water Main Replacement Project Contract to Sanders General Construction for the base bid amount as listed and tax included and contingencies for the amount of $52,635.56 for a total project amount of $677,750? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passed unanimously.
Thank you.
The next item is Item 6654, federal grant for East Lake Samamish Parkway. And the recommendation is to accept the grant and authorize the expenditure. And that is pages 13 through 24 in the Agenda packet. And this is one in which it would allow the expenditure of funds for design work on the East Lake Samamish Parkway. And those improvements would be additional curb gutter sidewalk bike lane and a new southbound through lane from just south of southeast 56th Street to just north of the Issaquah Falls City Road. And there is a description in the summary statement that this project has been on the city's transportation improvement program since 2004. And a further explanation of the time sensitivity of this. I'll ask council if there are questions that would benefit from staff presentation? Yes, Councilmember Fortner?
Not so much a question, maybe as much as just a -- okay, a question. Of a lot of the projects on the TIP, this one seems to be, to me, an awful lot of regional benefit for an awful lot of city cost. Because it's a grant, I would not want to vote against it because I think getting the money and stuff, I would -- my only question is, when you submit for these things, are there ways that we can submit for things that are more geared towards the local citizens rather than something that would tend for me to be more of a pass-through for area and regional traffic rather than local traffic?
I'm not sure that I'm the right person to answer that question. This is funding from the federal government through the Puget Sound Regional Council. And typically, things that are from the Puget Sound Regional Council are things that show some sort of regional benefit or connectivity. And I will defer to staff as to whether or not it's possible to get something that is more specifically local.
And I understand. And that may very well be enough of an explanation. I mean, if it's PSRC, then PSRC is looking for more regionals-type projects. I just, and like I say, I don't have a problem with the grant, but when I look at the amount of matching funds that go with it, it just seems like an awful lot of money to help support more transient-type traffic rather than local-type traffic.
I think one other thing that was, I believe, mentioned in this particular Agenda Bill is that that funding, that local match, is something that would factor into reducing the cost of the LID if the LID were to go forward. This is not dependent on the LID, but it would be not dependent on the LID, but it would be something that we, we could use as a, a match and a reduction to that, so. Yes, Councilmember Scher.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I do have a couple of questions, or maybe a few questions. So this, this bill hadn't come before any committee, and that was one of the reasons I wanted to pull down this evening, because we didn't have a chance to do some hands-on Q and A about it. And so I appreciate Sheldon being here to, to answer some questions. So if, if you'd indulged me, I do have just a few items that I, I just wanted to get some more information on, so some things are clear, sort of the way I would ask in a committee. So I guess the first question I have is, why complete streets funds? Why can't we use something from the street fund or other funding mechanisms in the budget, because this is primarily a roadway capacity project? I mean, it has complete streets elements as most of our roads should, but the primary purpose of it is clearly capacity. And in fact, in the, our twenty-year roadway capacity project list, it's listed, I believe, as number eight, providing a second southbound through lane from Fifty-Sixth to Issaquah Falls City Road, and it has a yes for improves LOS and adds capacity. So it's definitely the primary purpose of the project according to our comp plan. So can you just explain the use of complete streets funds?
The use of complete streets funds is also because that leg of the parkway also lacks sidewalks, and it also lacks bicycle lane. And so part of that project is to incorporate those two elements within it, because right now, on the west side of the road, those do not exist along that stretch of the highway.
So just as a follow-up to that thought, then, the, the Lake Sammamish Trail goes fairly close to that area that we're talking about. It sort of veers off a little bit to the west over there. Is, is the idea that these bike lanes would somehow supplement the use of the trail when that's reopened, or what's the relationship? Why, why are we seem to be duplicating bike lanes?
Well, there, there's two separate types of users that you have. You have the, the more aggressive user for the bicycles, and you have the more family-friendly users. And typically, the friend, family-friendly users will primarily be on the trail, and then you'll get the more serious riders that will ride in groups and packs, and they will ride in the street typically. And that's, you know, you're providing facilities that parallel the other facilities that go northbound. And so you've got a northbound bicycle lane through that same area, but you're lacking the southbound lane.
So just, just a couple other things, if I can. So this project, according to the agenda bill, is due to be constructed in two thousand fifteen. Is there an expiration on the grant, that if, you know, we, we had this as part of the LID, or somehow it got delayed, that we would be on the hook in two thousand fifteen or two thousand sixteen? Or does the, does the grant expire, basically?
Well, we need to, part of the reason why we're able to get the grant is because the region, PSRC, has issued grants through a competitive process a couple of years ago, and the federal government is telling PSRC, you need to obligate those funds. Otherwise, the state is going to lose that revenue now and in future times when grant money comes into the state. And so PSRC looked to those projects that were on their contingency list, and just started going down until they ran out of money again. And so they've, they've said that we need to obligate. In other words, we need to say, we're going to start spending that money as soon as possible for the design component. This is design money, it's not construction money. And we will have about ten years to complete the construction of the project and everything, according to WashDOT, to come up with a funding package and complete the, the actual construction. We'll have about ten years after the grant's over. But we'll need to spend the grant money within the next year or so, year to two years.
And, and is that through the LID, that that funding within the next ten years is expected to come forward?
That's one avenue. It could be other regional grant funds that come in. Given that PSRC has funded the design component of this, it's basically a shovel-ready project, so it would also rank very well for future regional grant applications. Sorry, Mr. Forkner.
Okay, thank you. And, and another question I had is, when you look at a, a map and you look at Southeast Sixty-Second Street, it's, west off Lake Sammamish Parkway is a city street, but it's, it's my understanding that east of that, as you go through the parking lot of the retail development to connect into Black Nugget Road, that is in fact a private roadway. It is not city-maintained, is that correct?
That is correct. It's a private road between Black Nugget and East Lake Sammamish Parkway.
And how does, does this project, if at all, impact the use of that particular connector? In other words, a lot of people treat that as if it were a city street and do it for cut-through purposes, and it, it does create a lot of traffic cutting through the, the shopping center there. Does this project have an impact in terms of either alleviating that situation, which a lot of, I think, local residents, to get to, to Joe's point, will use that road? Does that have any benefit to them?
The north-south capacity improvements will not affect what's going through that development, although the additional lane will allow further improvements to happen to improve the signal operations, which is their main entrance right there at Sixty-Second and East Lake Sammamish Parkway.
So I think, just, so I don't have to raise my hand again, just a, a couple of thoughts on this particular bill. Has this been moved yet? I don't, it has, okay. So, you know, I, I, I think I agree with, with Joe's point in terms of this being funding that we should consider taking advantage of. You know, it's, there's a few things that make me a little bit nervous about it. You know, I look at our report on the LID, and it looks like a good thing. It lists the traffic level of service and turn movements, East Lake Sammamish Parkway, Southeast Sixty-Second, and it shows that if you take action, all of the turn movements, the LOS is improved in two thousand twenty or two thousand twenty-two. And, and that's a really good thing. What I don't quite know is what that does to other intersections. And I know there are some LOS degradations on nearby intersections under the action scenario. And I don't know if this is one of those causes, that as you're shunting more traffic onto the parkway, or encouraging people to use an additional lane as opposed to going on other streets they may use, how does that impact the intersection at Issaquah Falls City, or Fifty-Sixth, or other intersections? And, and I'm not suggesting we have to go into a whole comprehensive analysis of that tonight, but it is a, a concern that I have. And, and my hope would be that as we move forward, since as Sheldon pointed out, this is only design money, that before we get to the part where we talk about construction, or even the LID generally, that we have an opportunity in committee to talk about the impacts of this particular project, as well as others that are planned in that corridor, so that the public has a better understanding of what the results of moving forward with actual road construction will be. I'm also a little bit concerned about using complete streets funds for what is primarily a vehicle-capacity transportation project. I don't know if, you know, if we vote in favor of this tonight, if that's really set in stone, or when the time comes for budgeting. It sounds like it would be set in stone, because it would be two thousand thirteen funds, which have already been allocated. You know, I, I really wish there were another way so that those funds could be recycled or renewed for multimodal projects in two thousand fourteen. But, you know, I understand there are complete streets elements to it, and so it, it seems to have some tangential nexus, if you will, to that program. But, you know, I just, again, would express a reservation about using those funds. Since, since we, and particularly me, have been beat up in the past about accepting grant money for road projects in this, the city, you know, that's another hesitancy in the back of my mind, is just making sure, you know, that we, we do this right, and, and everything works out good for the public's benefit. It, it's hard to know at this moment in time what will ultimately occur, but it sounds like from the studies we've been presented with and the information that you're giving us, as well as what's in this bill, more, more likely than not, it sounds like a beneficial project. So I'm going to be supportive of it this evening, but again, I do hope that as this moves forward towards construction, we'll have an opportunity through committee to revisit and discuss, for the public's benefit, this particular project. So, thank you very much.
Councilmember Goodman, followed by Councilmember Winderstein.
So Sheldon, on either end of this project, would there be sidewalk connections? Would, would connecting to, to existing sidewalks?
I believe there's a sidewalk connection to the south, to the existing lane widths and everything. And then on the area at Black Nugget, where Black Nugget actually comes out at its traffic signal at East Lake Sammamish Parkway, there would be a pedestrian crossing there at the signal to get to the, the sidewalk on the east side, as well as, I believe the design would incorporate a pedestrian connection to the trail at that point, because heading north along that side for a sidewalk does not make sense, because the trail comes so close, and it's confined with wetlands in that area. So we would minimize that.
Okay. And then I would sort of echo Josh's comments about the city match money, or the city participation coming from the complete streets funds. So were there other options considered for?
Other options could include using the ending fund balance. I don't know the number right off the top of my head for what's in the street fund, but given the, the status of the funds and everything, complete streets money was being thought of to hold and contribute to Northwest Dogwood next year, but we're getting a grant for that. And so it was a way to utilize existing budgeted money without asking for additional money out of the city's financial reserves.
So I think I know the answer to this question, but I'm not sure. So when we have a complete streets project that we're using money out of that fund for, do we use that money also for design, or do we use it just for construction of complete street projects?
We use it for design as well now. Originally, it was to be just for the capital improvements, but we are no longer doing the designs in-house, and so we have to use some of the complete streets money for design work as well.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Yes, Councilmember Winderstein.
So Sheldon, the Councilmember Goodman's question about the sidewalk. So I'm looking at the map. Sidewalk from Fifty-Sixth down to the Black Nugget Road, but nothing south of there on the west side of the road?
No, from Fifty-Sixth to Black Nugget along Eastland, East Lake Sammamish Parkway would not have the sidewalk. South of Black Nugget Road to Vaughn Hill should have sidewalk completion.
Okay.
Because it's constrained north of Black Nugget by wetlands, and the trail comes really close.
I, I got that flipped around. So what, what would it take to get, so I, I know we're doing the Bike and Ped, Bike and Ped master plan, and I know that's a work in process. Do you have any familiarity on whether or not it's identified to put a bike lane on the southbound of East Lake Sammamish north of Fifty-Sixth?
I do not know the answer to that question.
Okay. And I'm not, and I, and I, that was probably an unfair question. I know that that's a work in process. I can tell you that there's not a lane there now.
Correct.
And that it would be good to know if we had an intention of doing that, because it does seem a bit out of place, as, as we, we, we've, there's been discussion recently. There, the, the, the county regional trail will be there. It'll be, as soon as those wooden-rail fence and bollards are in, those gates will be down, and we'll be able to use that. And, but southbound, East Lake Sammamish, north of Fifty-Sixth, does not have a bike lane. And I don't know, is that a road that we could decide to put a bike, bike lane on?
Yes, East Lake Sammamish Parkway from Forty-third all the way to I-90 is inside the city of Issaquah.
Okay, okay. In your experience, is that ever in complete streets? Is that, is that on the complete streets list anywhere?
We've, we've looked at that a couple of times, and what we've seen is that we would probably have to remove the sidewalk on the west side of the road to accommodate it.
Okay.
But we'd certainly look closer at that as, you know, the improvements occur.
Yeah, as a frequent user of that road, on a bicycle, southbound as well, I don't go south across Fifty-Sixth, and so I am struggling with the, the fact that we're identifying complete streets money for this. And I do wonder, again, with the proximity of the, of the trail, which I think is going to be wonderful, and I think also that all types of users will use it. And it'll, it's, it's a, it's wide enough, and it's not in a, currently in a residential area. The expectation of a lot of foot traffic, in my mind at least, is, will be minimized. So, you know, even if I was really hustling through on my bicycle, I, I still plan on trying to make that work. So to use these monies for complete streets for this project, I really wish there was another option, because, because I, I'm questioning whether or not, I don't know, I have no idea what the master plan for Bike and Ped will come up with, whether they'll be even suggesting that. I wouldn't be surprised, and I don't want to bias it, but if they didn't, if, if, if it didn't, I would understand it. If they did, I would. It seems a little preliminary to say, we're going to do that, when we don't even know if our master plan is going to link it. I know south of there to Vaughn Hill, there isn't, you know, if you want another bike lane, you have to deal with the intersection of I-90, underneath I-90. Now you're onto Front Street. There isn't one there. I'm not sure when there ever will be. So it stands out in my mind as a small little section and of potential bike trail with really nothing in the foreseeable future is feasible for putting something north of it or south of it. So the use of complete streets for that purpose is, doesn't quite match what I would hope to see. And so, you know, so, could you, what, so the schedule, there's time sensitivity to this, right? And there's really, is there no opportunity for committee review of this agenda bill at all?
I can explain time sensitivity a little bit more clear than what's written in the agenda bill.
Please, thank you.
The time sensitivity is such that PSRC, when they went down the list of the contingency projects, they over-allocated the amount of money that they have based upon the other agencies not meeting their obligation dates for the federal money. And by over-obligating, the first one to get in is going to get the money. And so you've got a lot of other agencies that are all lined up. And if we go to committee, we're going to be a month out before we get our, our paperwork in, which means we may not make the cutoff, which means we may miss the nine-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars. This is the best shot we have at getting the nine-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand. If it delays by a couple of weeks or so, we may not get it. PSRC took their action on May twenty-third to approve the list.
May I?
That's the time sensitivity to it.
Supplement. One of the, yeah, one of the things, I think, that's raising some of the questions is where the actual funds are coming from. And so we have time, the council has time to do that. So, you know, what the agenda bill does is authorize the expenditure, it doesn't appropriate the money. So what we have proposed in the agenda bill, or what you've had from us, is the fact that we have already appropriated money from council in complete streets that we were going to use. But just because we submit the grant, get that finalized, doesn't mean that, from an internal basis, where the accounting is going to come from, and the cash is going to come from, we can't fix later. So there will be an agenda bill that comes forward when we do our normal budget amendments. And so if council committee wants to, you know, authorize this amount, knowing that they may want to look at how the money is reallocated, if they don't like it coming from complete streets, you've got kind of a second bite at the apple. But I think the biggest thing is getting the application in on time so that we don't actually lose the grant funds.
Thank you.
Councilmember Scher?
I did have a follow-up question based on Mr. Harrison's remarks. So my, my only fear with using or saying, okay, we're going to spend the money from somewhere else and not from the complete streets funds, is that it seems from the comments that there's a concern that if we use the complete streets funds, they're gone. But as Sheldon pointed out, they're already, they were allocated for Dogwood. And so it, it seems what I'm hearing, and my colleagues can correct me if I'm wrong, is that we would like to spend those funds on complete streets projects. And so perhaps, if there is an alternative And so perhaps if there is an alternative funding mechanism for this, that either those funds, all or a part of those funds, could be rolled over when we do our budgeting for next year, so that the complete streets fund is more robust in 2014. Because otherwise, if we find funding from an alternative source in the city budget, those funds would theoretically dissipate because they're not allocated for any project at this point, other than the existing complete streets 2013 projects. Is that, does that make sense, what I'm saying?
It makes sense what you're saying.
Okay. So is, would, would, would the intention be, from the administration's perspective, that if we did find an alternative source, that we could utilize those savings in complete streets and not just zero it out and start fresh next year, but based on the comments this evening, consider increasing the fund in 2014, since we'd have some rollover, at least for those items?
So the answer is yes. I think, you know, you have essentially, when you, when council adopts a budget, there's, you know, some estimated intent in terms of the funds and how it can be utilized, and then the actual amount. So in this case, what I'm kind of hearing is, from an intentional standpoint, you don't necessarily like the funds for this project coming out of complete streets. So we'd have to take a look at a second location to take that from. Then your option is, well, you can zero out complete streets and transfer the money from there philosophically, if you don't like it being charged there. But that doesn't necessarily have to be the case. You can leave those funds there, or if you do leave those funds there, then you'd have to look at another source of where the money is going to come from. But I, I think, you know, you'd have an opportunity, if you wanted to send it to committee, or, or even in the upcoming budget cycle, because there's going to be a budget amendment coming up. You can just take a look at it within that whole scope.
Thank you.
Councilmember Forkner?
One thing I'd be very careful about, when, when the Planning Policy Commission was reviewing the central Issaquah plan, something that came out extremely loud and clear was bikers want bike lanes. So whether you use this, whether you use complete streets money for this, or you decide to fund it in a different way, don't pull out the bike lanes because we didn't use complete streets, even though there is a trail adjacent. Taking bike lanes or not installing bike lanes in any street improvement we do in the future is kind of telling the biking community that, you know, we don't really care. And, and I, I sat through an awful lot of those meetings where there, there were a lot of enthusiasts there that said there just isn't enough bike lanes in Issaquah now. So as long as, as long as changing the funding doesn't remove that, I'm completely for it. Otherwise, I say, let's use complete streets so the bike lanes do get in there.
Any other questions? I have one. I need someone to refresh my memory as to who made the motion and who seconded it.
I don't have it on.
Okay.
I started the question four months ago.
Okay, so I didn't, I didn't simply blot that out in some way. All right, we would, we would, we would need, or maybe it's paralegal or something, it's outside of legal. Okay, is there a motion?
I would move to accept the grant and authorize the administration to execute the local agency agreement and the project prospectus for the East Lake Semamish Parkway, and authorize the expenditure of $1,218,750 in 2013.
Okay, moved by Forkner and seconded by Butler. Is there a desire for additional discussion or questioning? If not, are you ready to act on this? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
You're opposed?
No.
Okay. So that's four in favor and one opposed. Councilmember Winterstein was opposed. All right. That is the end of regular business, and we will now be moving into executive session as previously described.
Good of the order?
Good of the order. Oh, well, it looks like everyone's running away, so maybe we can wait to move into executive session and go to good of the order instead. Sorry, I keep trying to truncate things. Good of the order, we are now on good of the order. Any items for good of the order?
There do not appear to be.
There do not. Would the council like a five-minute recess before we go into executive session?
Please.
Okay. We're going into a five-minute recess. So we'll resume at 20 of and move into executive session.